Hello?
Hey, buddy.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
First of all, thank you for waiting. We should have started it too, but there seems to be some technical difficulties, but that's not going to stop us there. Hopefully, you're going to continue to try to connect Charm TV, but that's not stopping because this is a very important issue, and we want to move on. So I'm going to start at this point. Good afternoon, welcome everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the 6th District, Chairperson for the Economic and Community Development Committee, and co-sponsor of this important bill. This afternoon, we will hear the following bill, 22-0254. And today, in attendance, we have members of the committee: John Bullock of the 9th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mark Conway of the 4th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Odette Ramos of the 14th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Robert Stokes of the 12th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have my co-sponsor of the bill, Councilman Zeke Cohen of the 1st District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And then also joining us is Councilmember Eric Hostello of the 11th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. President.
And just checking to see... And, oh, I'm sorry. And we also have a member of the committee. You're over there in that corner. Councilman Dorsey of the 3rd District.
Skulking.
Sorry, Councilman Dorsey, I did not see you there. And I see Aaron DeGraffan Reed online from the Council President's office. And Representative from the Office of the Mayor, I see Sophia G. And so let's begin. Bill number 22-0254, Office of Aging Independent Agency, for the purpose of establishing an Office of Aging as an independent agency, defining certain terms, providing for the appointment of the Director of the Office, establishing duties of the Office, providing for the staff and budget of the Office, requiring the adoption of certain rules and regulations, requiring the Office to submit an annual report to the Mayor and City Council, establishing the Commission on Aging to advise and collaborate with the Office, providing for the appointment structure and governance of the Commission, requiring the Commission to submit any annual report to the Director, and requiring Commission members, the Director, and other staff of the Office to the financial disclosure under the Ethics Code. This bill was introduced on July 25, 2022, and the bill sponsors are Councilmembers Cohen and Middleton. And before we begin, I have a statement, and my co-sponsor, Councilman Cohen, also has a statement. So first, I want to just kind of mention that, you know, it's a... This is... These gatherings or hearings like this are just a very important way of the Council really addressing some of the problems that we continue to have throughout our districts. And I want to make it clear that, you know, we're not... We're trying to build relationships and partnerships to enhance services in our city. We're not... This is not a bashing of the Health Department. We know that it's time for a change when services are not working at its best, and that's all services. And it really came to light for me during the start of COVID. We arranged... Councilman Cohen and I arranged visits and listening sessions to hear and better understand concerns at senior centers. We went to different housing facilities and so on. And based... And also based on individual issues that come into our district offices, it's time for a serious upgrade in assistance for our older adults. We have a very dedicated Baltimore City Commission on Aging of volunteers that meet and discuss important topics, but remember, they only meet once a month. I've been a member of that commission and still a member for a very long time. It's a very big task to handle, and it's... But it's not enough. You'll hear some of our commission members testify today, and possibly some of the agencies that are connected with scattered activities that they basically, you know, try to help as... With our older adults, but we know that that's not enough. We need more. It's the responsibility of all of us. Successful aging gracefully involves three main factors: being free from disability, of disease, having cognitive and physical abilities, and interacting with others in meaningful ways. And we do that through what we do, what happens in our communities, through food access, through routines. We know that older adults need a scheduled routine, through respect, through physical activity, through comfort, financial security. Some seniors require assistance in managing their money, and it's nothing... Nothing wrong with that. An older adult wants to maintain their independence. That's how they help it live long lives. Some senior citizens struggle to take care of themselves and complete every... To complete everyday tasks. But many want to age in place where they are. We need a more connected system, stronger working relationships with the Health Department, stronger public relation campaigns. This crucial work needs a qualified director. We're asking for five or six strong, sincere outreach coordinators. We need a legal team. It's... At the end of our title, it's about retirement education. We need retirement services, transition services. And all this, of course, we know takes operational funds. Today's hearing will bring awareness of the need, the negligence, challenges, and concerns. And the time is now for action. After my colleague shares his statements, we're going to have a format here, and we are going to begin with four or so testimonials because, at the end of the day, that's what it's all about: hearing and listening to concerns that are happening out there in our communities now. And then we'll hear from the agencies, and then we have a health panel that are going to give their description and updates and share their stories, and then we'll hear some more testimony. So on that note, and before... And after we hear from Councilman Cohen, and then one of the committee members also would like to say a few words, and that's Councilman Robert Stokes. And are there any other committee members that would like to say something at this point? Okay. So we'll go ahead, and Councilman Cohen, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, colleagues and agency representatives, and thank you to the community members who have gathered here today. I want to begin by thanking Vice President Middleton for her partnership and guidance as we have embarked on this legislation. It's been a real pleasure getting to work with you. Also want to thank Commissioner Girassa. I have often said, we have the best Health Department in the United States here in Baltimore, and I appreciate your leadership and stewardship during the pandemic. And I will echo my colleague's opening statement that this is not in any way, shape, or form an attack on the good work that has happened in the Baltimore City Department of Health. Older adults are a rapidly growing population within our city and country, and we are falling short of meeting their needs. These folks suffered disproportionately during the pandemic, both as among the most physically vulnerable populations, but also in terms of isolation and loneliness. As we've traveled around the city, we've heard concerns over safety, transportation, programming, mental health, continuing education, the digital divide, food access, and housing. Despite the amazing Commission on Aging and the good work under Deputy Commissioner Tan in the Baltimore City Health Department, many of our needs remain unmet. We expect that some administrative functions will remain in the Health Department. We also appreciate and understand that there will need to be time to build infrastructure and stand this office up. But let's be clear. Vice President Middleton and I believe that the time for delay is over. We must aggressively move to meet the needs of our older adults. Here are some of our non-negotiables in this bill. This office must be cabinet-level. It must report directly to the Mayor and the City Administrator and have the power to push other agencies, like the Department of Housing and Community Development and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, to respond quickly. Just like the Office of Youth, Children, and Families, we need this office to have enough clout to move the wheels of government when seniors need help. This office must command a significant budget. While I am not prepared to state a dollar amount today, we know that budgets represent our values. If we really value our elders, then the commitment to this office must be commensurate. This office must have the capacity to have real-time engagement with seniors, and my colleague mentioned having coordinators out of the office, not just a website. We believe this office should serve as a one-stop shop to meet the complex and shifting needs of our aging population. We expect that staff will be hired to organize and regularly engage with elders in senior housing, as well as folks who are aging in place. Last month, we were able to save Experience Corps from leaving Baltimore with support from Senator Ferguson, Elevate, the YMCA, and an amazing crowd of older adult volunteers, several of whom are with us today because of their sheer tenacity and will to get it done. But they shouldn't have had to do it alone. This office must have a clear understanding of the programs that nurture our seniors and foster intergenerational relationships. And finally, this office must treat our elders like the assets and wisdom keepers they are, not like a problem to be solved. Older adults in Baltimore have raised not only their own children, but in many cases, are helping to raise their grandchildren. They pay taxes. They contribute. They are powerful defenders of Baltimore. But too often, they are ignored or disregarded as an afterthought. They deserve better. As a final note, I would not be here where I am without the guidance of my grandmother. Growing up, I had some learning disabilities and at times struggled academically despite having smart parents. The one person who consistently believed in me, even when I was not at my best, was my grandma. She poured love into me, and because of who she was, I'm here. I became a teacher and a Baltimore City Council member. How many of us that are here today are the product of our elders investing in us? We owe them more than we can give. But one thing that we can do is create an office worthy of their greatness. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I look forward to this hearing.
Thank you. Thank you. And I also want to recognize former Councilmember Mary Pat Clark of the 14th District is here. And she's going to testify in just a few minutes, but we have a member of the committee, Councilmember Stokes, would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few notes. During the Kirk Smoak administration, I worked, and they had a cabinet position that worked with our seniors. They went to Kings Dominion, they did ceramics, they made their own quilts, they went on trips. I don't know what happened... What happened to that going... Went into the Health Department. But I also want to thank my colleagues because me and Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark have been talking about making this a city agency for the last three years. So I want to thank my colleagues for picking up what we've been talking about for a long time. And real quick, Madam Chair, I'm looking at the Department of Finance, and they don't have no report. So I'm concerned about how much is this going to cost? And we need to be talking about that also. I know it's a little early, but that's the cost that me and Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, we were talking about, about this actual committee. So thank you.
Do you have a report, the Finance Department? And we'll get to that when they...
Okay, thank you.
So on that note, we are going to hear just... We're going to start with some testimony first just so we can begin to get an idea of the severity of our problems. And so we're going to start off, and I want to start off with Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. Has some testimony to give. As you know, she's been... She's been a champion of this effort for many, many years when she was a councilperson, along with some of our former colleagues, Maggie McIntosh.
Oh, yeah.
And also Barbara McColsky. They were all advocates in helping our older adult population.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of... Councilman Cohen, my old partner in crime, Councilman Stokes, and all of those gathered here today. I'm here...
You can remove your mask if you like while you're speaking.
Why can?
While you're speaking, yes. So we can hear you a little bit better.
That don't mean I...
And if you want to walk up, step up a little closer.
Well, yeah. My problem is, I'm too...
Perfect.
I don't have that little stool that my colleague Barbara McColsky used to carry with her.
If you pulling that down, that helped a lot.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you both for your comments, all three of you for your comments. Listening to them, I have thrown away my written speech. You'll be glad to hear that. I will leave a copy with you, however, and I have a few notes that I'd like to just speak about. And indeed, we've been talking about this for a long time. Now, we're... We are here today to begin the journey back to where we came from years ago. And we came here in 1973 as mere children and began what the feds had really put in motion, which was special funding, not for health, but special funding for the... All that you have said about what elders need. Me, I'm 81, and I'm on a continuum right now. I'm not going to say I'm not ill because that would be bad luck, and... But I'm not. But I am on a continuum, decade after decade, in which more and more I need... Who do I call for help? How do I sit on this phone for an hour and a half waiting? Who can I call to try to figure this out? Where do I go to get yoga at a price I can afford? What should I... Should I really drink all this water, or is it really bad for me? Et cetera. So it's a journey back to the days when we had that place. And we had it largely because of our colleague of the day, now-retired U.S. Senator Barbara A. McColsky. She was in the council when this opportunity came along, and she stopped a couple of roads while she said, "Go forward to this because it's what Baltimore needs." What is it? It's all the things that you both have described. It's the way to be involved, connected, able to get your own help, able to know where the transportation is, you can trust and afford. All those things that... That needs a central clearinghouse, an outreach, and steady return calls to succeed. From 1973 up until 2011, 30 successful years of this operation. And let me just say that in all those times, and when I was here during those times, I swear to you, young as you all are, that the head of this agency was next... There was only one person better known to the citizens of the city, and that was the mayor. And the next person everyone knew who she was was the Director of this agency. We need that again. Someone that's in the field, the correct field for this because we're not looking for help with illness and disease and COVIDs. We have the best in the country already. That's not it. We're looking for this other approach and specialty to complement it, not to get buried in its midst. So I got to look at my notes. I'm really getting through them pretty fast. Back in 2011, after 30 years, that merger with the Health Department came along. And you know what, looking back now? I'm saying, just the way our mayor, through his courage, saved so many lives in this city with the help of that Health Department, so that Health Department protected the strands of what we lost in such a way that they exist today there and are able, therefore, to be transferred back to their proper home as partners with the Health Department. So we're not here to... We're here to praise everyone for what they do best, just like you do in the classroom, and kind of set aside what... The mess that it makes when you try to pull those strands apart from where they have been buried. But we have to do that. In the meantime, let me say... In the meantime, as we begin this process, and it is a process, it is a journey, it is a... What we need, I think, to do to let our seniors know, "We're here. We got you. We need it again." We have... It would be good if the mayor, who has done so much already to keep us going and alive and well, would pick up one little seat and add it to its cabinet so that while we work this through, the agency of the aging will have a seat at the city's table. Aging is not an illness. Aging is a continuum. Thanks for your consideration as a council of that journey for the inclusion and the empowerment of us Baltimore City elders. Thank you for this hearing, for this opportunity, and for all the goodwill at the table.
Thank you, Councilmember. And another testimony, Tessa Hill Aston.
Are you fine? All right. Give them.
I have an allergy right now that's bothering me, so I keep having coughing attacks, which is the first time in my life. The doctor says it's the aging process.
I hear you.
I used to teach... I used to be a director of early childhood, and then something happened. Then I woke up one morning, I was working at Aging. So it came with the age. But first of all, I really idolize Mary Pat Clark.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Tessa Hill Aston. I use... Everybody knows me by Tessa Hill, but because a lot of you know my husband, I have to say Aston. Everybody knows that, right, Robert Stokes? I used to work at the Department of Aging. I retired from there a couple of years ago. I was sent there by City Hall to do work in housing situation because the Department of Aging did a lot of good stuff, but it was missing some housing issues. And I was sort of, I'll say, expert at housing, doing homelessness, work with veterans. I am the key person that wrote the grant and led the veteran shelter on High Street. I found the building, I wrote the grant. I did that with Joanne Salinski, and I'm very proud of that. So, thank you. And I have continued at work for the city. And as some of you know, I was the president of the Baltimore City NWCP for nine years, maybe 10. And in that role, it crisscrossed. So it complimented the things that I did for city agencies for over 30 years and my work at the NWCP, which we were the leading branch in the whole Maryland and also 20 out of 2,000 in the state. Now, first, let me just say something. I'm going to divert from this to politics. It's not one person that runs for office, who works in a community, that does not look for a senior citizen when it's time to vote. The senior citizens are the voting population that pull the vote in every community, regardless of what zip code. The seniors are who we all depend on to get the vote out and do vote religiously. They're the super voters. Okay? So in saying that, I am firmly in agreement that the Department of Aging should be a standalone agency. I worked also for the Department of Homeless Services under Joanne Salinski. I didn't want to go there because I was working in housing, and I got asked. I didn't apply for no job. I got asked to get transferred because of my abilities and the work that I did, and I'm proud of that. So I have to brag about myself a few minutes. When you work for agencies, you put your best foot forward for the constituents, the residents, the consumers, whatever label you want to put on them. The Department of Aging was doing, I feel, a very good job with what they did with seniors as they knew it then. When we got transferred and pulled into the Health Department, it was the worst thing I've ever seen in my experience of city government. The employees were treated very rudely. It was like, you take it, or you get out, or submit your resume, or quit. And you go on with the Health Department. And that's what people did because they needed their job. I was not labeled a... My title was not an outreach worker, but that's what I was. So when you talk about an outreach worker or a community organizer, that's what I was. So in all the years, almost 13 years of working with the Commissioner or Agent, I only went as an employee, staff person. I saw the Commissioners one time other than when they walked through the building and everybody said, "Oh, those are the Commissioners." Like, that's the Cabinet members. That's the President's Council. That's the Mayor's Council. That's the City Hall people. People got nervous who wasn't used to it. I didn't get nervous because, you know, I know y'all in all capacities. You're my friends. One time, I got invited to the Commissioner or Agent meeting in the evening at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock, whatever it was, because of... Mary Pat Clark. Mary Pat Clark demanded, at the time, the Director, John Stewart, invite me to the Commission meeting so I could be thanked for my work. And let me just tell you what the work was. Up on Upper Charles Street, University Parkway area, apartment building, middle class, upper-middle class, got converted to... Someone bought it from Boston and wanted... middle class, got converted to, someone bought it from Boston and wanted to turn it into apartments instead of rentals, and they wanted them to buy it, the seniors, and they were frantic. Mary Pat Clark's district, a lady about 85 years old who had just lost her husband, was so frantic, she went up on the 8th or 9th floor in her apartment after she was talking in the lobby with her resident friends, and she went up and opened up the window and jumped out the window, nine floors, stories down, about 8:00 in the morning. Schoolchildren saw it. I think Mary Pat Clark's husband was walking a dog at the time. Am I correct? Mary Pat Clark called Department of Housing and some other agencies, and she got no help with this emergency. She called the Commissioner or Agent and talked to John Stewart, who was my boss, and told him the dilemma. I happened to be walking down the hall, and he said, Tessa, come here, I need you. Go up to, Mary Pat Clark has emergency, I want you to go. I stayed up on University Parkway at that apartment building for over a month. I created a tenant council, I met with the residents every day. They fell in love with me, I fell in love with them. As a result of that, Mary Pat Clark, Maggie McIntosh, and a few other people came about and made a bill into law that nobody can come from another city or state and buy a building and force people to purchase when they were already renting or whatever they were doing there for over 25 or 30 years. Am I correct, Mary Pat?
Always.
Thank you. So, in saying that, there's so many things that are needed. I still get phone calls right now in my personal life of senior citizens that need help. And when you talk about outreach workers and people who help seniors, when people call the Department of Aging, sometimes they whisper, and they say, can you help me? Can you help me? And then they click the phone. And then they call back, and I say, she said, I'm sorry, hung up on you, but my son just came in the room, his wife don't like me, I just heard my granddaughter say she tired of sharing her room with me. People are victims. They get meals on wheel and they throw them away. There's so much going on, people are victims of what's going on. I cannot help a person over the phone. Soon as I talk to someone, I say, when can I come see you? I have to see their face, I have to see their mood, I have to see their house. So, the Commissioner or Agent should be a standalone agency, and it needs to be outreach workers who really know, and the Commission needs to know, well, it won't be a Commission if it's that way, but I'm just saying, it might be a different kind of Commission, but the people who work for the Department of Aging in the event that this does happen, whoever's outreach workers, it need to be people who really know the community. Each district and each community is different based on the geographics and the income and the different things that happen in that person's life, and they need to see it in person and not over the phone. Thank you.
Thank you for that important information. And Sarah Matthews?
Thank you for having us here today. My testimony is pretty lengthy, and as a result, I've put it in writing. But there are some things I would like to highlight. I would like for each of you to imagine that I am your grandmother. Imagine me calling you and telling you that someone is holding me hostage in my senior No one came to my rescue. Imagine me calling you, my grandchildren, telling you that there is someone running from Pennsylvania Avenue and dying in my lobby. Just imagine, you have older adults who are afraid to speak out. They're afraid because they are threatened with eviction. There are those older adults who are aging in place, who have some very serious public safety concerns. We all heard about the older adult in Park Heights who was shot because she called and reported drug activity. We all know about the older adult in Monteverde who was found murdered in her building, in her apartment with no forced entry. I just want to share those issues with you because we are in need. Just like the millennials, our issues have changed. They're more complex now. We live in mixed-use buildings, where the residence at J. Van Story Older Adult Building has at least two people who are overdosing per day. The fire department comes out, and the older adults have to walk through those kinds of scenes, which is traumatic for us. We've already were isolated and traumatized during COVID. We were traumatized during the water crises. I do not know what the issue is, so I'm just gonna call it like I see it and like I feel it. African-American older adults in Baltimore City, particularly in West Baltimore, are ignored. We don't have resources at our senior center, which is the Sandtown Senior Center. We don't have anyone to advocate for us when an older adult in my building was left at Security Mall by the mobility until 1:00 a.m. in the morning. These are issues I think that the Health Department does not lend an ear to because or an eye to, or put a hands on it, because they are busy with other things. They do a great job, but very frankly, they don't do a great job for us. In the city resource directory for older adults, 85% of those resources are non-existent. The numbers are incorrect. Where do we go? Where do we seek assistance? We are not burdens, as Bessie Simon says. We are assets. We're the reason for some of you sitting where you're sitting today. Why is it that retirees can't afford insurance? I'm a retiree. I don't qualify for any public assistance. And by the way, my neighbors wanted me to tell you that $30 a month for food stamp is not sufficient. If you want to do a fundraiser for the squeezy, do one for us. We paid into the system. I worked for 59 years, and at Social Services, when I went to apply for food stamps, they said I qualified for $8. I said, no, give it to someone else who needs it. The digital divide, we were told during the water crises that an email went out. While half of us, the older adults, and we don't want to be called anybody's seniors, were not able to read that. Some of us, very frankly, cannot read and write. So, we get scams a lot. I don't see any effort from Baltimore City placed upon us about scams. We get scams, I get thousands of calls. I mean, that might be an overexaggeration, but probably within a year's time. And my neighbors, my friends get those calls. We are asked to go across the street, and I almost fell prey to that once. The guy was like, just, do you have a Walgreens or Rite-Aids across the street? And I was like, yeah. It was like, go over there and get a money order, and just, no, get a card and send me the money. And of course, I'd taken a class and heard that that is not what you do. In fact, it is an indicator that someone is scamming you. Again, I just want to let you know that our issues are more complex now. We need the focus of one agency with specialized professionals who can improve, give us service so we can improve the quality of our lives. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. And then we'll just take one more, and then we'll go into our agencies. And then after the agency reports, we'll go and, you know, we'll move on. Yes?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ms. Joy. I'm from Canton's Boston Street Waterfront. I live in a senior building there. I'm a community advocate, activist, willing worker, voted Canton Community Association Volunteer of the Year. That is my councilman that I have been happy to work with over the years since he has been councilman in the 1st District. What I need to say this afternoon, elders are golden treasures, and we should be treated as such. We had to fight in our early years, our teen years, our young adult years, our middle age years, and now that we are elders, we are sick and tired of fighting. We are now fighting the government system of things for what is owed us. We are now fighting the sad, sick, horrible nursing home abuse and neglect. We are now fighting the owners, management at way too many senior housing developments. This is just three of the challenges that come to mind right now. Again, I repeat, we are sick and tired, and we need and we want change. The aging process is so overwhelming. It is so, I never thought I would get to this point. It is so overwhelming. And finally, I would like to talk about six types of elder abuse that I know of. Physical, sexual, emotional, neglect, abandonment, and financial. So, what is your point, Joy? All six of these elder abuse, my mother experienced, all six. I do not want to go out this way. Thank you.
We'll now hear the agency reports, and then we'll ask if the committee has any questions, and then we'll move on to the rest of the in-person testimony, and I know we have some online as well. So, we'll start with the city solicitor's report. Elena DePietro was here, she might have stepped away, so I can come back to her. Oh, she had another meeting. You want to go ahead and speak for her?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. This is Sophia from Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The law department stands by its support, and it approves the bill for formal legislative decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll go with the Commission on Aging and Retirement Education. James Campbell and Olivia, are they online? Mr. Campbell, can you hear us? James Campbell and Olivia Pharoah are co-chairs of the Commission on Aging. James Campbell, if you can hear us, try to unmute yourself. Better yet, we're gonna make you a panelist.
Madam Chair, they're online. I don't think they're a panelist.
Oh, okay. We move them to a panelist if they, are they, I think they're gonna say a few words? Okay. We're just moving them on the online panelists to see if that's gonna help.
Olivia cannot unmute.
Oh, there he goes.
Okay.
Hello, Mr. Campbell, you're on.
I think Olivia was going first. Is she there, or?
Olivia Pharoah, oh, here she is. Olivia?
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, you're on.
Great. Thank you so much, Madam Chair and members of the committee. I'm Olivia Pharoah, the co-chair of the Commission on Aging. My co-chair, James Campbell, and I are pleased to be part of this hearing with all of those who are advocating for a better quality of life for older adults in Baltimore City. We absolutely welcome this opportunity, just really to offer some information on the Commission on Aging and Retirement Education. Members of the Commission are appointed by the mayor and city council. Our enabling legislation is in city code. Our charge under the law is to assist the city in coordinating and developing effective services and opportunities for the city's older residents, and this includes recommending new programs, conducting surveys, studies of existing programs, and holding of public hearings. The Commission also evaluates how the city disseminates information about the city programs for older adults to the public. We report our findings and concerns to the mayor and make recommendations to the mayor for...
Wait a minute. We, there you go.
Okay. I don't know what happened. But over the past year, you know, we've been having monthly meetings, and we've really engaged in dialogue with the city departments regarding programs for older adults in the city and how they can be strengthened. Departments that have participated have included the Department of Health, Department of Housing and Community Development, the Housing Authority, Mayor's Office of Neighborhoods, Department of Public Works, Department of Social Services, and Department of Recreation and Parks. Of special concern to the Commission was how the city responded to the E. coli outbreak last September, and how information about the boil water alert and water distribution was communicated to vulnerable older adults. The Commission held several meetings with city agencies to review this response, including the Department of Public Works, and the Commission members provided feedback and recommendations for communications during such emergencies, especially for the future. So, you know, there are many dedicated staff working on behalf of older adults in city government, and I really want to recognize their work, and I do appreciate that they took time to come and have this open dialogue on their work for older adults. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this general information. Jim Campbell, my co-chair, is going to provide some additional details on the work we've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia, and thank you for this opportunity. I really want to thank the sponsors of this legislation and members of the council who are here today for this opportunity. The needs of our senior citizens are paramount for me, and I've been working on it a long time, and members of the Commission share that concern. As you can tell, there's so many issues out there, and it's just great to hear this interest, and that we hopefully can move ahead and make a real difference for the people who have these great needs. Um, and I want to mention, since my mentor, Mary Pat, is here, and I hope she doesn't mind me talking about her, but when I first got in, interested, I, former member of the House of Delegates, and when I first got involved in community work, it was with Greater Homewood, working with Mary Pat before she even became a councilperson. And we helped set up the, uh, Action of Maturity Program in North Baltimore, which is still in existence today, serving senior citizens and has a robust transportation system. And I worked with Mary Pat and Tessa, Tessa Hill, on some of the buildings in North Baltimore that were threatened to be purchased by, uh, out-of-towners or John's Hopkins, actually, and to try to preserve the homeowners so that they wouldn't be evicted, uh, make other arrangements for the homeowners. So, I have a background in that. I feel passionate about this, uh, bill and this interest. And, uh, when I joined the commission a year ago, uh, they wanted to focus on issues affecting residents of long-term facilities in the city. The pandemic exposed a lot of deficiencies, including what's going on in nursing homes and assisted living facilities. And where the commission is very concerned about the lack of oversight, the declining quality of care and workforce issues. The pandemic really highlighted these deficiencies for us. And we've been working with the members of the city delegation and members of the legislature on legislation to address this. Earlier this year, we invited a national expert on nursing home operations who described the significant growth in private investment companies in nursing facilities. And these facilities, their bottom line is profit, of course, and had, had a detrimental effect on care. This national expert has testified in Congress and we're trying to follow this and there's some legislation in Indianapolis addressing this concern. We met with the city ombudsman who raised concerns about the operation of small assisted living facilities. These are nine beds or fewer. There's a lot of horrendous conditions, I think, going in some of these facilities. And the state has set up a work group to look into this and, uh, hopefully we can get a better handle on what's going on. These are basically unregulated nine-person facilities and, uh, we need to make, provide better care to those people who need it. We've been working with partners on this, the Alzheimer Group, the Public Justice Center, to see what options and legislation are out there to address some of these concerns. So, commission is very concerned about these issues, I know, and, uh, but I'm heartened to hear, you know, these ideas out there and, um, hopefully we can work with, uh, the council and others on making life better for Maryland's older population, Baltimore's older population. So, thank you for this opportunity and I look forward to any help I can provide in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Pharoah for taking the time for your comments. And then we're going to go ahead and move to the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James, System Budget Director, representing the Department of Finance. Uh, we have submitted a report. We support the intent of this legislation but are opposed to it as written, um, due to some concerns around the implementation. Uh, our report lays out various, um, areas of that. I will note, uh, as Councilman Stokes said, it does include a fiscal analysis. So, as, um, former councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, uh, expressed, care was merged with BCHG, the Health Department, uh, in fiscal 2011. And that was to provide additional fiscal support and administrative support for the work of that office. Our concerns around creating an independent office of aging arise from the support that was needed at that time to manage the work, uh, and additional support that will be needed there that the agency currently provides. Additionally, there's designation requirements based on how the legislation is written for the area Agency on Aging designation, which the Health Department is currently designated as, um, that would impact funding that we receive. Uh, more broadly, we wanted to look at what other jurisdictions have done and have seen that they've actually moved independent offices into other agencies rather than creating separate offices of this, um, nature. So, those are just some of our concerns there. In terms of a fiscal impact, we looked at, um, personnel and matching grant funds that would be needed. Based on our examination of the budget, there's a total budget of about $12.9 million across all funds within, uh, the Health Department for Aging that we believe could be transferred, would be budget neutral, to the independent office. But we believe there would be about $950,000 in personnel costs that would be needed, um, that we've laid out in our report. Those are some positions that are currently covered within the administration of the Health Department that could not be moved out, but you would need a separate individual such as facilities manager, IT support, legal counsel, human resources, fiscal staff, like that. There are also matching grants, um, that we would need to consider. Right now, there's about $5.7 million that the city, uh, receives from federal and state grants that has about $1.8 million in local match requirements that is covered within, uh, Health Department's current budget. But those matching funds would not be able to be moved with the agency as it is. We would need to identify $1.8 million in matching funds to support that, to maintain those, uh, federal and state grants. Beyond that, uh, I believe that the rest of it is laid out in our bill report. One thing that we did want to note was, um, the broader services that occur outside of the Health Department for our, uh, older adults within the Department of Housing and Recreation and Parks and the coordination that would happen with those services as well, and wondering, um, about that coordination. But our focus for this analysis was just on the Health Department.
Thank you. I'd just like to quickly say that, um, as we're hearing more testimony today, um, we're actually showing the need of a change. And we know that there was a process to, that was followed to, um, make the change to include it in the Health Department. And it, part of the process was going through the state. We know with, with other agencies such as homelessness, that, um, surrounding, a lot of our surrounding counties, they come to the city for help. They looked, they looked to the city for help. And we're just trying to, uh, show that it's time for the city to step up and look at this whole picture and make changes. And I know that the Fin, uh, Finance Department, you know, you take your time and look at the fiscal aspect of all of this, but at this point, it comes down to looking at where all the money is going to help our older adults in other agencies and trying to work together to make these changes. We can't reiterate enough of why it's important now to sit down at the table and make changes with things. Does my colleague have anything to add? And then I'll see if any other committee member has a question or response to the Finance Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, and thank you, Mara. Appreciate your testimony. I would just say, though, that, you know, why is it that we can afford to have an office of youth children and families but not an office of older adults or aging? It seems like it's a population that we know, as folks have said today, have a complex set of needs that often do not fall within the Health Department and that we are doing a real disservice when we nickel and dime our elders for what didn't sound like a tremendous amount of money. I will also say that we've been working in pretty close partnership with the administration trying to figure out a way to make this work where we would not deplete the Health Department of some of the critical functions around grant-making and other things that they are doing and that those negotiations, conversations have been really fruitful and seem to be headed toward a good place. The last thing I will say is, you know, we're in a position as a city where if we do not take care of this population right now, their needs are going to be catastrophically worse. We will pay for it one way or the other. And while we have a governor who looks favorable upon Baltimore, while we have federal, uh, federal delegation and more federal money going into Baltimore than I have ever seen in my lifetime, now is the time. And so, understand that there are some fiscal implications to this. Understand that it would take some infrastructure building and moving around, but I believe that through partnership with our hospital systems, with our foundation community, with our universities, with our older adults themselves, we can get there.
Uh, we need to talk ahead to this point from, uh, the committee members moving on. The Board of Ethics did give a favorable report, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Mara Romo. I am the Ethics Officer for the Ethics Board. And as stated in the Ethics Board's report, the bill's financial disclosure requirements are consistent with the ethics law. The board does not take a position on the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Much, much of this, um, hearing now is focused around, uh, the department that where, uh, older adults are basically somewhat housed. And as we continue to say, again, it's about, um, enhancing, we, we heard beginning testimony of just a touch of some of the problems. And we, we, we did, I wanted to do that purposely so we could feed into some of, you know, everyone can get a feel of the need. So now I want to hold it, uh, turn it over to, um, our wonderful Health Commissioner that, um, has really been working hard, as, um, Councilman Cohen mentioned, that they've been having meetings with us. And we've started a beginning dialogue to really try to figure out ways to, uh, start a, some kind of process. So at this point, I'll turn it over to our Health Commissioner and, and her team.
Sure. Give me one moment. Let me fix this. Um, so again, thank you all. Councilwoman, actually Vice President Middleton, um, co-sponsor of the bill and co-sponsor Cohen, as well as, um, additional committee and council members, um, just for this opportunity to talk about, um, some of the work that we do with the Division of Aging. Uh, I would be remiss not to thank my colleagues who are here, Deputy Commissioner He Young Tan, to my right, who leads the division, our Legislative Director, Julia Roche on the end, um, and behind me, we also have a wonderful panel, the leadership team from the Division of Aging within the Health Department, Assistant Commissioner Jim McGill, Director Kijia Ro, Assistant Commissioner Alice Huan, and Assistant Commissioner Byron Pugh. So, thank you all for the opportunity. I do want to thank, um, the other agencies here. I think, excuse me, a couple have noted, um, it really is a partnership with the other agencies. It's working alongside the other agencies to support our older adults. Um, and lastly, I want to thank our advocates who spoke today, um, and our commission chairs who spoke today, um, and provided their testimony. Um, obviously, this, this work that we do at the Health Department, the work that we do in the Division of Aging, um, it is intended to be service, right? We are in, um, public service. Um, and, and like many of our, our testimony, uh, folks who provide it testimony, um, we acknowledge that, um, aging and the support for older adults, it's not just health-based, right? Like, we, we really do think of it on a continuum. And our goal reflects, I think, the goal that everyone has here, which is for older adults to age safely in their place of choice. So, all of the programs and things that I'll discuss today are intended to support that. So, I, I do have a quick agenda. So, very quickly, I will talk about some demographics and some of the known disparities here in Baltimore City. I'll review the current organizational structure of the Health Department and where aging, the Office of Aging, fits in within that. I'll also, um, talk about funding. I know finance covered some of that, but I'll, I'll quickly, um, go through what some of our funding sources are. Um, and then I'll spend a few minutes on the different service areas within, um, within our Division of Aging, uh, within the Health Department. So, beginning with just general demographics, in 2010, um, there were about 106,000 adults over the age of 60 living in Baltimore City. By 2019, that number had increased to 125,000. And that is, is it not showing?
No. Unmute on here?
Yes.
Are we good now?
He's trying to get your presentation on the screen.
Okay, okay.
It's not allowing me to do it. It's not allowing her to do it. Can the size be changed? So, you're the presenter, so I guess you have to make the size bigger. Wait. She's trying something else. Technology. All right, we got it.
Thank you. Are we good to go?
Okay. She was just, because you didn't have presenter rights or something. Is that what you were saying? But go ahead.
Okay, perfect. So, um, as I was saying, in 2019, that number had grown to a little over 125,000 older adults, and, um, that equates to about a 17.5% increase over that almost 10-year span. Additionally, when we look at the racial breakdown, and this is data from 2015 to 2019, about 62% of older adults are of African-American descent, um, while about 30, almost 31%, um, are Caucasian. Um, when you break that down by gender, 41% are men and 59% are women. Uh, and this map represents, um, the density or the number of residents over the age of 60, um, living in different census tracts with the darkest red representing, um, the highest density or highest population. Um, and as the map gets lighter, um, that represents less older adults in that particular area. This provides a description of life expectancies by council district, um, on the left. Um, and then we see the map, which shows that same, um, breakdown by census tract, specifically with the darker green representing the highest life expectancies, uh, and the red representing, um, the lowest life expectancies. Um, I think it's important to note, if, if anyone, when you look at this map, it, it very much mirrors what we see for many of the health inequities and health disparities across our city, um, where your life expectancy, as well as other health outcomes, are determined by where you live. It's what we call the social determinants of health. We know that these inequities exist. So, we know that Baltimore City has about a 30% higher mortality rate than the state average. We know that Baltimore makes up about 38% of the state's poverty for people over 60, and about a fourth of our older adults live in healthy food priority areas. We also know that older adults in the city are about 13%, um, have about 13% more falls a year than the state average. So, shifting gears a little bit to talk about overall structure of the Health Department. Um, we have about four divisions. The Administration and Operations Division provides, um, infrastructure, fiscal, and, um, support to the programs. And then we have three programmatic divisions, Youth Wellness and, Youth and Community Wellness, rather, Population Health and Disease Prevention, and Aging and Care Services. Taking a deeper dive into the structure of the Division of Aging and Care Services, there are five primary areas, specifically advocacy services, which includes things like our Maryland Access Point, um, which is a call center to support, uh, provision of resources and connection to resources for older adults. We also have community services, which includes our Congregate Meals Program and some of our falls prevention work. We have the support of our senior centers. Um, there are 13 total senior centers here in Baltimore City. The Health Department operates seven of those 13 and provides funding and technical assistance to the other six. We have home and community-based services, um, which includes, um, older adults who are signing up for the Medicaid waiver and need a medical evaluation. And then lastly, we have client services, um, which includes... And then lastly, we have client services, which includes residence, resident support for some of our most vulnerable, like our Adult Public Guardianship Program. So I think it's been mentioned that in addition to housing this Division of Aging, we serve as the local area agency on aging, or AAA for Baltimore City. This is mandated by the Older Americans Act. We are mandated to provide particular services, and we receive funding to help support older adults, again, to safely age in their place of choice. This is a breakdown of the different service areas, including the budget, FY22 budget for each of those service areas. As has been mentioned, a lot of this is state and federal funding, there are some local matches included. But you can see, again, a quick breakdown of about $5 million going towards health services for seniors, a little over $3 million for senior centers. The Administration and Care receives about $700,000, much of which is supported by general funds. We have our advocacy for seniors, direct planning and support, and community services for seniors. So as mentioned, we have the aim of keeping our older adults aging in their place of choice. And this includes making sure that they have access to care. I'll talk a little bit about our map call center in a few moments. We know that our senior centers are vital hubs for older adults within the community, and we really do work to support some of our most vulnerable, like those that are in long-term care facilities or assisted living facilities and report concerns. It is estimated that we serve about 23,000 older adults each year through those 25 programs, as well as through grants and contracts with other organizations. So this map represents a breakdown of all of the senior centers across our city. As mentioned, we operate about seven of them, and we support funding and technical assistance for six of them. I think it's important to note that we recognize the digital divide, and we have subsequently worked to secure $2.3 million in grant funding to expand the digital infrastructure in all of our senior centers, and we are partnering with BSIT to implement that work. When we look at Service 723, I've mentioned the support of our most vulnerable residents. So we do house a long-term care ombudsman, and they responded to almost 850 complaints from nursing home and assisted living facilities and their families. We also provide guardianship support to almost 200 older adults annually, and this is no small feat. We even applied for additional funding and received additional funding through ARPA to hire additional case management and support for that critical work. We also provided legal services to 400 older adults last year. Next, in Service Area 723 is also the Maryland Access Point. So I've mentioned this as our, our call center, or kind of our one-stop shop. And I think what's, what's really impressive about this service in particular was how we had to rapidly expand during the pandemic. So this was a, an entity that received maybe about 25,000 calls per year at the height of the pandemic, they got about 100,000 calls. So we hired 10 additional community health workers and two committee health worker supervisors to support the, the work that was being done. And we're continuing to look for opportunities to support those community health workers in their ability to do outreach at our senior centers, at community sites, because we're seeing the top five needs for older adults: Medicare enrollment, food access, in-home care services, housing support, and healthcare needs. Also under Service Area 723 is a new brain health initiative. So in conjunction with the Alzheimer's Association, the National Association of City and County Health Officials, as well as the Maryland Department of Health, we received a $475,000 grant this year to expand work on outreach and training for older adults who may be experiencing dementia. We know that African-Americans are two times more likely to experience dementia compared to their white counterparts. Additionally, in Service Area 725, we have our community services for older adults specifically focused on nutrition and food access. We saw an increase in SNAP participation, or Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program participants, about 1,500 over the past year. And almost 18,000 older adults actually are on SNAP. Again, going, going back to many, much of the work done during the pandemic, we have since then delivered about 3.5 million meals and over 50,000 grocery boxes since the start of the pandemic. This map represents where we can see SNAP participation across the city, as well as the sites of our grocery box deliveries, and many of our congregant meal sites. I think probably most of you all know, when the pandemic started, we shut all of those congregant meal sites down and had to quickly transition to meal delivery. So do want to thank our partners at, at Meals on Wheels and Maryland Food Bank. And then another really important effort that was spearheaded by the Division of Aging, but supported by many other programs and offices within the Health Department, was our work around older adult vaccination. We know that this was really our most vulnerable population during the pandemic. And if you think back to early 2021, when everyone wanted a shot, and there were no shots, you know, this was the division that really stepped up to ensure that we had a vaccination program in our senior housing sites. We, we wanted to make it as convenient as possible. So, yes, we did our mass vaccination sites, and that was critical work, but we knew that our older adults would be challenged to get to, to those mass vaccination sites, and we wanted to keep them safe. And so, again, had the pandemic, we performed about 200 vaccination clinics directly in senior housing sites alongside many of our healthcare partners and our hospitals, providing over 10,000 vaccines to older adults. We also vaccinated assisted living facilities, did about 1,500 vaccinations at assisted living facilities. And then we supported the vaccination of over 1,800 homebound residents. To date, 84% of our older adults, 60 and up, have received at least one dose of that COVID-19 vaccine, and 80% are fully vaccinated. And I think this is kind of my last informational slide, but I, I did want to point out the work of the Commission on Aging and Retirement Services. We heard from the co-chairs Jim and Olivia, but, but this commission is extremely important. It is staffed by the Deputy Commissioner. And this is, you know, often who we're looking to for, for the voice and for the advocacy directly to the mayor's office, directly to the Health Department, on things that we could be doing to improve. So, very much appreciate the partnership and work that's done by the Commission on Aging and Retirement Services. So again, thank you all. I know that was a quick breeze through, but definitely appreciate the opportunity to talk about the work that the Division of Aging does.
Thank you, Commissioner. And again, this is just all about us having that conversation and the partnership. I just, there was a slide, I think it was Service Area 723, Maryland Access Point.
Yes.
Just kind of saying that Maryland Access Point is, you had mentioned the, the top five needs: Medicare enrollment, food access, in-home service care, housing support, healthcare needs. We had a, one of the people giving testimony, I think her name was Ms. Joy, and she had mentioned that, mentioned what she felt, and I kind of agree with her, and just through my experiences, through some of the problems in my district, physical, sexual, emotional, neglect, abandonment, and finance seem to be a re, top issues here in the city. And, you know, I question these top five needs based on Maryland Access Point, because that city, I mean, that statewide. And we in Baltimore City have our own particular problems and needs, and this is, you know, I agree with Ms. Joy that these are some of the main problems that I encounter on a daily basis. Your answer to that?
Yeah, I, I may turn it over to Deputy Commissioner to, to respond. You know, but I, I will say, and I mentioned it very briefly, certainly for our most vulnerable, we have, like, advocates supporting, again, those in public guardianship, those that are in long-term care facilities, if those, those are reported to us, that's a separate program that we have, the Long-Term Care Ombudsman and the Adult Public Guardianship Program. But I, I'll turn it over to certainly Deputy Commissioner Tan if there's additional.
Sure. Thank you for your question, Madam Chair. It's a good question. I think to, to clarify, these are the top five needs that the Maryland Access Point in Baltimore City receives through our data points. It does not outline the top five needs for older adults in Baltimore City. So just to clarify that your point around elder abuse and physical abuse is, is one of our top priority areas, and the Department of Social Services through Adult Protection Services is the key hotline for addressing those needs in the community. The Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program is staffed by our really seasoned team, and they, as, as the Commissioner mentioned, investigate over 900 cases a year in long-term care facilities. These are 5,000 residents living in these long-term care facilities, and they investigate about 900 cases of potential abuse in these spaces. I believe the Department of Social Services has more concrete numbers around abuse cases in the community, but to your point, elder abuse and neglect is an ongoing issue, and, and this does not reflect the overall needs of Baltimore City, it's just the numbers that are coming through our Maryland Access Point.
So hearing that, there definitely seems to be some problems between long-term versus at-home care, and you agree with that?
Yes, yes. These are, these are polling specifically just from the Maryland Access Point and the calls that we get through the Maryland Access Point. And any abuse in the community, we defer directly to Adult Protective Services right away.
Thank you. Committee Member Odette Ramos, Councilwoman Odette Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you both for putting this bill in, it's extremely important. I had a couple of questions for the Health Department. Just wanted to note, Slide 11, the map is wrong, it's got old council members on it. Uh, excuse me, former council members on it. And...
I apologize, that's an oversight on my end.
No problem. The other question was, in my district, we don't have as many senior buildings, but most of the older adults in my district live at home. And what we find is often, because I've knocked on the doors, especially during the tax sale work, to make sure that they were getting all the resources that they needed to try to stay out of tax sale, this was two years ago, before the mayor was taking homeowners out of tax sale. Often, they did not know what was available to them, like the homeowner's property tax credit, like, you know, in-home healthcare, like that they could get a vaccine at home, like, you know, so many resources that, you know, you and I can look up on the internet, but they're not going to look up on the internet, right? So many of them are not necessarily connected with family. So is the off, the advocacy office actually meeting people where they are and going to their houses to say, hey, we know that you're here, we want to help you, you know, what can, what can we, we do? And I say that because one of the initiatives we want to do is actually do that, go knock on doors, talk to our residents, say, you know, about, you know, estate planning and about, and I have now, I'm grateful, I have Gilchrist in my district now that also does last three years of life in-home hospice, but also in-home medical care. And, you know, we've got all of these resources that need to go out. And so, one of the things I'm hearing from my colleagues is that there needs to be a broader effort, not just to meet people in the senior centers, or hope that their daughter, I'm saying that on purpose, is going to show them the internet about what's going on, it's that they need to have trusted people coming to them saying, you know, how can I help you? And so, it's been my experience that that is not happening. And I would hope, and I would imagine, that my colleagues are imagining that that kind of outreach with the two, with the outreach workers would indeed happen. So I guess, I'm just curious about the advocacy office and the outreach that's been, that's being done currently.
I'm, I'm happy to answer that question specifically. First of all, I want to address that we are trying to meet people where they are currently with the funding and support that we currently have. You're absolutely right, door-to-door is the best way to meet older adults. I was a community health worker, and that was the best approach in terms of providing people with complex needs support. During the pandemic, when there was federal funding and all of the emergency money, we knew that community health workers out in the community was going to be the best way to get people vaccinated and people to information, and that's why we had that team there. I think when the Commissioner mentioned Slide, the Maryland Access Point, with where we hired 10 community health workers, we want to sustain that work so that we can continue to do that work in the community. Currently, we do not have those CHWs, but that is something that we are doing. We're, we're seeking ongoing funding to be able to do and make sure that we're out in the community, because we know that that's the most effective way to get the information out there.
I think it's, it's job number one, frankly, because if people don't know the information, they don't know how to, you know, get assistance. So my second question is, I remember looking at the, the budget for the Health Department. You are 82% grant-funded, which is, as we've said publicly, not sustainable. The, you do great work with all of the funds that you have. I'm curious, and I thought we had been working through this, it, it doesn't seem to me like the intent of my colleagues is to, well, let me just back up and say, can you talk about, is the federal funding that you get for care and senior services, that has to flow through the Health Department? Tell me a little bit about how that money flows, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I'll, I'll turn it over to Deputy Commissioner Tan. I will, again, say briefly, and I put the slide up with, with the different budget numbers. And, and I do want to quickly say something about health services for seniors, because that is something that I think is unique to the Health Department, that we do have nursing staff that go in-home and do evaluations, and that is through the Medicaid program. So that is a program that, that would need to stay in the Health Department. Again, that's the 311, just because of the nature of services provided.
Councilwoman, I think you were asking about the federal funding under the Older Americans Act and the designation for the Area Agency on Aging. The funding solely goes to the Area Agency on Aging, and the state designates that entity. Currently, it's the Health Department, it's a process that would require just permission from the state, but it really is just to change the grantor to the grantee. In terms of the federal funding under the Older Americans Act, it's very specific and very specified in terms of what we can and cannot do. You asked about advocacy services in Service Area 723. If you, you look in the budget that's allocated there in 723, the majority of the funding is federal and state, meaning that they're, they're specified in terms of what we have to do in terms of programming. So to be able to expand any programming, like outreach workers, expanding any new initiatives, we would have to seek additional funding outside of what we currently have that's mandate, that we're mandated to do. The federal dollars are really specified, I can go into detail, and we can provide an overview of that. I think it's in the fiscal note under the finance report, we can talk a little bit about it, but it's very specific in terms of what we can and cannot do under the Older Americans Act. Much of it is specific around food access, access to care services, Title III B, Title III C, health promotion that has to be evidence-based, so it's very specific in terms of what we can and cannot do. We're happy to explore other areas and, you know, things that you might think would be helpful, but it's very specific in terms of what we can and cannot do. And to your point, when we're 80% grant-funded, it's really challenging to be able to pivot and address the current needs of our city residents, but we try our best with what we can, we have.
So, so just from my understanding, the state designates the agency, the vessel, basically, that the funding comes through, and currently it is the Health Department?
Yes, to receive the Older Americans Act, but...
For that money, yeah.
Yes. But, but that's what the state does in terms of...
Right, and so they have criteria in which, you know, has to be filled in order to make that designation, so, because they want to make sure it's, you know, going to be reported and all of that. I mean, that, I understand. Because I'm trying to think of a way, and I think the, my colleagues, you know, certainly understand, we don't want to lose any funding, but at the same time, we need to accelerate how the services are getting out. time, we need to accelerate how the services are getting out and if there's a way to do this in partnership. So, I appreciate it. I have one more question, but I'll yield, so.
Well, just to piggyback on that, are the qualifications for each service clear? Is there a document outlining the qualifications for all services and is it clearly defined?
Well, that's a good question, right.
Or is it clearly defined for seniors to look at and figure how they can, where they can get help?
Each year, we write an area plan for the State Department of Aging that we're happy to share with you. We're doing an ongoing five-year comprehensive plan on those funds, but every year, there's an updated area plan and specific programming and funding for each of that. We're happy to share that with the committee.
Okay. So, on that note, Councilwoman, do you have a question, and then we'll have Stokes. And then, just to remind the committee that, you know, we're going to have some work sessions on this and a lot, we can really get in detail with a lot of those, you know, with this discussion, because we still, we do have some very patient, some more people that want to testify that can just kind of help paint the picture of what we're trying to do here.
Let me yield to my colleague from the 12th, if that's all right, and then I'll...
Councilman Stokes, your voice.
Thank you. I'm looking at FY22 budget and general funds, and that's why, I think it's a great program. It always worked when it was a cabinet position, but I'm looking at the budget, and that's why I brought up about the funding, because when you talk about making it a cabinet position, you have to hire more employees, there's salaries included, there's benefits included. So, we need to talk. I think we need to talk more about the budget itself. I mean, looking at this, what they have now and how much it's going to cost to create that cabinet position with employees, with benefits, with salaries. So that's what my concern was. I think it was great when it worked, but we need to look at how much it's going to cost to even implement something like this, because you just can't get somebody to be a cabinet member. They got to have staff. Somebody has to be there to work with the director of the senior programs. And if we're not talking about those conversations, and again, looking at this budget, how much is it going to cost us more to create all that along with staff and benefits and salaries that's going to add to this? That means Dr. Roser got to go find some more federal money, see, I write some more grant money. So that was my only concern, is how much it going to cost to create that whole agency again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And just to make note for the committee that the Finance Department did roughly say it would cost $947,534. So, that was the...
Is that...
Mara, did you want to add, speak to that quickly?
Madam Chair, can I just ask, can she just break down what $947,000 is going to cover? Because that can just...
It is broken down in the report.
Well, I want to...
But Mara, you go ahead, and when we have a work session, if there's any more detail you can investigate, we'd like to have that. But yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I can provide, so in the report we lay out is that that would be a position of a director, a fiscal officer, a grants manager, a human resources, external affairs position, facilities manager for the facilities, obviously, IT support and legal counsel. And so, that is the, those are the positions that we would imagine would not move from the Health Department. So those are positions that are currently supporting these services in the Health Department that cannot be moved into this new office due to the fact that they are supporting the agency as a whole, so we would need to create new positions in that way.
Madam Chair, are they new positions? I don't understand.
Yes, so current, they need to be new positions.
Thank you.
And clearly, in my eyes, that's not a lot of money.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, just two quick points. One to my colleague from the 14th District, just on the communication, I think she's absolutely right to say that, and Deputy Commissioner Tan, you said this as well, that direct outreach, door-to-door, in the centers, in houses, at people's homes, is the way to go. We saw it during the pandemic where DPW put out a tweet as a way to alert folks to the ECOI crisis. We know that many of our elders are not on Twitter. We know that, to one of the previous testimonies, that not everybody is checking their email. And so, having that outreach, having that flex, I think is hugely important. To Ms. James and the Finance Department, I mean, that's less than a million dollars. That is one, less than one five-hundredth of what we're spending on our police department. You can't sit here and tell me that our elders are worth less than one five-hundredth of BPD. And it's not to compare apples and oranges, but it is to say that we're not talking in a city with a multi-billion dollar budget, less than a million dollars, to me, really does not seem like a lot of money at all to spend on this line item. Commissioner, one question total, how much does the city, so just general fund, not counting state and federal, spend on aging within the Health Department?
I'm guessing that's just a tally of this.
Probably $2.5 million.
$2.5 million?
A little off, but different size. That's not much general fund.
You have to use my...
$2.5 million.
Okay.
Estimated, $2.5 million.
So again, $2.5 million is, right, not nearly enough. And again, I know that excludes, of course, federal and state, but to me, that is a real indictment of us as a city, that we're only spending $2.5 million on this vitally important population. And I just feel like, whether it's $2.5, $3.5, whatever that number is, we as a city need to meet this obligation. We just got, we got over $640 million in American Rescue Plan Act money coming to the city, that came to the city. How can we not afford $3.5 million to support our elders who have been supporting us?
If I could just add that we do have some ARPA funding that is set aside to support older adults, which is not included in this FY22 budget. And so, when you look across the city, that looks like about $29 million, and that's not just the Health Department, but other agencies that support older adults as well. So I do just want to note that.
$29 million in ARPA spread across all the different agencies that support? Okay.
I just wanted to make a comment that the cost is not the reason for the opposition for us. I wanted to add that, that I hear what you're saying completely and that we are interested in seeing where the conversations go and how the bill evolves, considering the factors of the designation that is needed and the impact that would have on funding. Those were considerations in our bill response as well. So I want to just add that note, that we're excited for the work sessions to figure out how we can move forward on this.
Appreciate that. If the cost isn't the reason for the opposition, then what is the reason for the opposition?
As I laid out, the cost was not the only reason for the opposition. It was also the designation of the Area Agency on Aging and the impact that would have on our federal funding for that. The grants would be lost for that. The consideration of how care was moved into health in fiscal 2011 and the reasons behind that, to create better coordination and support for administration work in that, as well as looking at other jurisdictions and how they have actually moved to have independent offices brought into broader departments, like Departments of Constituent Services, broader issues in that way, rather than moving them out to independent offices on their own. So trying to look at the practices that are going on outside of the city and see what was best practice there.
Appreciate that. I'm quite sure, though, if you do a scan across Maryland, you would find a mix between offices that have been brought in and others, like I believe Montgomery County, Baltimore County, that have their own standalone offices. And I would also just say that, again, understand and really appreciate the Commissioner's comments on the care money and how it moves, and I believe that through conversation with the administration, through an ongoing dialogue, we can figure out a way to keep that funding in the Health Department while still having a standalone cabinet-level agency that does all of the things that the elders in this room today have articulated they need.
Okay, thank you. On that note, I think it's time to really get back into some more testimony before we do a recess. So I just want to say, you know, through the Baltimore City Code, we prohibit anyone from acting disorderly in a disorderly manner, so there, this has been a very good formative meeting, and we definitely want to keep it that way. Some people did have to leave, but I just want to recognize that, is Robin Kaplan still here? Okay, she was a tutor of Experience Corps, had to leave. She was a tutor for eight years, and she just wanted to mention, like many other members of our senior community, tutoring and working with young children is so important, so we want to, again, thank AARP and that partnership for getting that together. And also, is Francine Hyman here? Okay, she had to leave, and she also left testimony for this committee, and basically, she is the program director of the organization, or the program SOAR. It's SOAR program at Economic Action Maryland, which was formerly the Maryland Consumer Rights Coalition, and they are definitely champions and stand for securing older adult resources and programming. So we do have her testimony here in support of this and favor of this legislation. And again, I can't thank the people that are also waiting online, but I want to get through the people that are in person that are still here waiting. And I'll, we'll go ahead, there were also two aging commissioners that have a brief testimony, and we'll go ahead and start with Thomas Cujo, if you want to come up, a representative on the Commission of Aging, and behind him is also Reba, is Reba Cornman?
Yeah.
Okay, and then behind Thomas, we'll have Reba.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak with you all this afternoon. It's a great honor that I feel that you all are making this an important issue here at the Council and for our city. I felt this way for a while, that the importance of aging issues had not been recognized to the degree that I feel that it should be. To say more about myself, I'm a physician, a geriatrician here in Baltimore. I do house calls in the community, caring for those older adults who can't get out and come to the doctor's office. And I also am a public health researcher on faculty at Johns Hopkins. And so, I'll start my comments briefly by saying that I moved here in 2015 from Washington, DC, and I moved into, I think, as current Councilwoman Ramos District in Edna Gardens. And I was met, when I rented a place there, by a neighbor by the name of Floyd Wright. He welcomed me into the community. He was an older gentleman, he lived there with his wife, and I would say that that interaction and relationship has been critical for me to decide to stay here in this city. And I think when we talk about aging issues, we're talking about issues that impact everybody. I would say good policy for older adults is good policy for all of our community. I would also say that our older adults deserve investment, they deserve care, they deserve attention, and to nickel and dime, the budget as it relates to what we invest in aging is a travesty. We know the trajectory of individuals who are getting older is increasing, and I'd be curious to ask those who are looking at the budget to understand what's been the trajectory for growth of investment in older adults. And I would also like to see those examples that you would provide from other municipalities in terms of what they're doing, so we can learn from them and not make mistakes that they potentially may be making or have made. I would say, last point that I would make as we think about this Office on Aging in terms of key tenants that I think about, if I was involved in designing an office, if this is the way that we'll go as a city, is that this point about meeting people where they are is critically important, and I don't think we need to stop doing the work that we were doing in the pandemic to meet people where we are, where they are. This, of course, requires investment. I would say the application of best practices informed by experience and evidence is critically important to all of this work. The points about appropriate management and accounting and compliance with federal funds, I think we can figure out a way to navigate how to capture those AAA funds from the federal government. And then also, a point that has been brought up and I've already made, but it's stressed here, about the importance of adequate funding to support current and future work. This population is aging, and we need to see investment in them, just like we see investment in other areas. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Council, for providing the time.
Thank you for your comments. And Reba? Also a Commissioner on Aging.
Thank you so much. I'll be very brief. I'd like to thank Sharon Green Middleton, Zee Cohen, and everybody, Odette Ramos, and everybody who has supported this effort. My name is Reba Cornman. I'm a retired geriatric social worker, and I've been living in Baltimore for about 37 years. My commitment to older adults is currently realized through my membership on the Commission on Aging, as well as the Guardianship Commission. I'm on the boards of several nonprofits supporting low-income older adults in Baltimore City. Over time... Excuse me. Thank you very much. The commitment to the issues facing older adults in the committee in all communities has generally been less than the commitment to younger populations. The fact ignores that older adults are members of families. And when I hear about agencies that are youth and families, I'm like, duh, what about older adults? As has mentioned before, they're the ones who are often deeply involved in the responsibility of the care of younger people. And the fact is, is that anything that we do on behalf of older adults and everybody should be enriched to the community at large. Everything that we think about in terms of access should be access for everybody. I feel that, and it's not just Baltimore, there's this idea of redlining out older adults from the thinking about vital agency, city responsibility. It's always easier not to embrace these needs than has. There's been so much that has preceded me, I support so much that's been said, I support everything. I just hope that we can all move forward, work collectively. My area has always been interprofessional, connections. We have to do this across agencies. It can only enrich the lives of all our citizens in Baltimore, and I'm so excited for the future, and I would just like to thank you so much.
Thank you. Is Emily Fader still here? Okay.
Thank you, Vice President Middleton and Councilman Cohen and the rest of the Council. My name is Emily Fader. A standalone office of aging in Baltimore City is a critical step in equitably meeting the needs of Baltimore City residents. The current absence of a standalone office of aging deprives older adults and their family systems, including caregivers, of the support they need to live safely, peacefully, and with wellness. Older adults in Baltimore City are facing an affordable and safe housing crisis. Some of our most vulnerable Baltimore City residents in their 60s, 70s, and even 80s are street homeless, waiting for their names to come up on an affordable housing waitlist. Some die before they ever get safe, affordable housing. Safe, affordable housing, transportation, access to physical and mental health services, and food insecurity are all major barriers preventing older adults in Baltimore City from living safely and from thriving. A standalone office of aging will afford our older adults the support and re... of aging will afford our older adults the support and resources they need to live safely and peacefully. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I'm going over the in-person testimony, I just want to make sure that these folks, if they didn't want to testify because they didn't check at all, Jim McGill, were you, did you want to testify? Okay, just checking. Brian Pugh, okay. And Robin Ree, I can't, I'm sorry if I pronounced your name wrong, Replan, Replin? Okay, so they're finished. We'll go ahead with Yolanda Pulli. Narrowing it down here, then we'll get online. Pull that down to your liking.
I don't like it at all.
Okay.
My voice carries, so I really don't need a microphone. Unfortunately, I don't have a soft landing for the disparities of our seniors. We have to recognize leaders over leadership. Oh, I am Yolanda Pulli. My organization is called People Empowered by the Struggle. We meet people at their needs, and we help them navigate through. We're 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We don't take off for your birthday, my birthday, nor Jesus' birthday. We understand that trauma happens before nine, and it happens after five. So we're 24 hours a day, seven days a week. When I thought about coming down here and testifying, it actually broke my heart because there's certain things that we should not have to fight for. And our senior population is definitely that we should not have to fight for. I get like 30 to 40 calls a day. Can you imagine who they come from? Our seniors in housing. So we have people living in buildings, just elevators broke there, dying, going up and down steps. Matter of fact, you can go to Lakeview Towers right now, they don't have an elevator. They don't have no senior services. They have no resident services. Okay, let's take a walk down history, memory lane. 400 years of slavery, 250 years after slavery. And we're still trying to overcome from the 30s, 40s, 50s, 60s, Martin Luther King, his dream, which is now a nightmare for our senior population. These people deserve the right, the dignity and respect that they deserve, because to be honest, if we don't get them to vote, who do you have to vote for y'all? No one. We understand that there's a top, a middle, and a bottom. You're the top. So your middle and your bottom don't communicate with the top. And I say that because when I get phone calls stating that, you know, they called the Department of Housing, and they were disrespected and ignored and being rude to. These people deserve dignity and respect. They are taxpayers. They pay everybody bills in here. They deserve it. So when, when you, when you think about, you know, the disrespect that they get in the Department of Housing, they wait on waiting lists because they get a once-a-month check now. They worked their whole lives. Now they get once-a-month checks. So now they have to go into senior buildings, where they're basically put in these places to die by themselves. No senior resident services, nobody reaches out to them. But they reach out to us. We go out to them, meet them at their needs, and help them navigate through. We're stripping them of the things that they have worked hard for, and that's dignity and respect. And that needs to be implemented back in. The ones that, you know, the ones that, that's struggling. And, you know, it's no building that should ever go up anymore, and the ones that are up needs to come down. No seniors should ever try to figure out, or people with disabilities should have to figure out how they're going to get up 15 flights of steps with no elevator. That's disrespectful. It's disrespectful. So when we go against the grain, and we go against our seniors, like I said, everybody wants to be put back in their seat. And there's certain seats that I think that should be voted on, so people can understand their struggle. But we have to understand that one day, if we don't overcome this right now, because Black people tend to have a history of fighting to keep overcoming the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result, which is insanity. One day, this is going to be y'all. And if we don't change it now, because I'm 48, about to be 49 next year, I mean, this next month, I need somebody to have guardrails and safety things put in place, just in case I outlive my population. So I say that to say, give them what they need and deserve, which is their dignity and their respect back. Thank you, Madam.
Before you go, what was the address of the senior housing? Because we do have housing here with the elevator.
Lakeview Towers. Yeah, we have Lakeview Towers. We have.
What's the address? Do you have the address?
Yeah, Drew Hill Lake Drive. The big tall buildings.
Okay.
There's two of them.
Okay.
And you also have 2100 Madison.
We do have housing here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Director of Legislative Services for DHCD. I'm also joined here by Deputy Commissioner Hart of Home Ownership and Housing Preservation. That's actually HABC property, so we will have MoG R refer to them.
So you'll do the follow-up with what she had mentioned about the elevators. I think that's something that needs to be handled right away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. One of the problems, it's not the chairs. Up, up. Okay. So when, if there's some more problems, well, there are some people, some agencies here, but we can talk to, we can talk about that afterwards and get those specific problems, since we do have some help here. Jason Rodriguez?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Vice Chair, and thank you all the committee members for allowing me the opportunity to present you this evening. I want to introduce myself. My name is Jason Rodriguez. I am the Deputy Director for People Empowered by the Struggle, which is a one-stop shop for all struggles. If you had to ask yourself, what is our greatest treasure in Baltimore City? Is it the Fort McHenry National Monument and Historical Shrine? Is it the Walter Arts Museum? Is it the aquarium? Is it the Inner Harbor and all the beautiful historic ships? Our greatest treasure in this city is our seniors. They have paved our future, the pathway of our future. They are the pioneers and the forgers of our history in this city. I'm going to give you just an image of what our organization has been experiencing with the just sheer large volume of phone calls that we've been getting from senior buildings. And you said that Department of Housing is here. There needs to be an assessment in all buildings that accept any type of vouchers, stipends, government funding, HUD, federal funding, things of that nature, in reference to our seniors. Because I tell you, there's not one building that I have not gone into and have not found some sort of deficiency in those buildings. What's interesting is, is I can't say the names of many of these seniors. I'm not going to mention names this afternoon. I'm just going to tell you their quick stories. And because many of them, many of our seniors, especially seniors of color, have such a strong pride, and they really don't want folks meddling in their business. And I'm actually going to explain some of that to you. So we have a senior that we are addressing, spent almost 30 years in the Maryland State Police. Most of his family has passed away. He currently lives in a senior building in Madison, right on Madison and North Avenue, right across from Standard Auto Parts. All night long, they're out there cooing and singing and doing drugs and playing loud music. He's wheelchair-bound. He's an electronic wheelchair. The building that he lives in, the wheelchair ramp system breaks all the time. Although the building accepts residents for adults with disabilities, the building is definitely nowhere in compliance or certified with any ADA codes. And he often gets stuck downstairs, not being able to make it to his apartment, and has to stay downstairs for hours at a time, and in some cases, 24 hours or more at a time, because there's nobody really capable of helping him up into his apartment and helping him with his mobilized wheelchair. I have another tenant that lives across the street at another building, also a wheelchair-bound gentleman. His building's supposed to be ADA certified. It has no automatic open door functions to it, which is part of the ADA requirement and for accessibility. And the ramp is not at the standard for what ADA is supposed to be. So every time he goes into his apartment, he flips over backwards and busts his head in his wheelchair, just trying to get into his home. And then the rest of the unit that he lives in, because it's not really ADA certified, he has to deal with obstacles like carpet and the transitions between wood floor and carpet in these humps inside the apartment that makes it just impossible for him to navigate through his home. I have a lady that lives in a unit that hasn't been out of her home in eight years. Her home smells really bad, and she really needs residential services to help her. What our organization does is, is we help her do her banking, her shopping, and help her take out her trash, and do anything else that she asks us to do. But it's important that we should have some sort of residential services, especially in these buildings throughout the city, because there's many seniors that in some cases, their family members have passed, their friends have long gone, they have no one else. And they are just living in these buildings, just waiting to die. No one is checking up on them. And they're dealing with the many issues that one of our citizens of the city have told you about, sexual predators, financial predators, everything that you can think of as far as a predatory practice is concerned with our seniors. We are experiencing that with our seniors. I have a senior that lives in McCullar Homes. She was brought up here during Hurricane Katrina under FEMA. She was left up here. Her daughter has since died. All of her family has been moved to Texas, where they have been retransplanted after FEMA. We're talking about Hurricane Katrina. We know how many years ago that started. No one from FEMA, no one from the city, no one from the government has come to check up on this woman. Now, what has happened to her? She actually is in the wrong apartment. And according to the Department of Housing, they're supposed to have a security agency that basically assesses the quality of life of every senior that lives in a senior building that the city runs. In this particular situation, this particular tenant is actually in the wrong unit, because she's starting to get to the point where she's fragile, and she's tripping and falling and losing her balance, and her equilibrium is off. She has fell in her apartment on the second-floor unit and fell on a glass. She has a cut on the side of her face that looks like a bear literally scratched her face off, because she fell on the glass. And everybody agrees that this woman should not be in this unit, and in some cases, that somebody from FEMA should have helped her to reunite with whatever family is still in existence in Texas, because that's where she wants to be at. I have seniors that live in buildings where they squeeze sometimes other families in, single-family women with children. There's a child that lived in one of these buildings in Madison. She lost all of her hair. All of her hair fell off of her top of her head. She had beautiful Afrocentric, beautiful kinky hair. She lost every bit of her hair. Why? Because in the building that she lives in, the little girl doing something innocent that most children want to do, playing a simple game of hide-and-go-seek. She would hide every day underneath the kitchen sink. When we came to inspect the unit, what we found was black mold had just permeated the whole area underneath the sink. And this little girl was going underneath there every day to be able to hide from her parents and play a trick on her parents and her grandmother, who lives also in the same building. When they diagnosed the child, they found high levels of, I mean, high levels of black mold in her body, to the point where they had to detoxify the child. The child is currently going through treatment to detoxify her. And we had to complain, you know, they said that the residents have been complaining for years, and we even think that in some cases, there's something broken within the system, because there are buildings that are getting HUD funding that should have never been certified to operate, that seniors should not be living in those conditions with rats, roaches, drug infestations. They should not be living in these conditions. But what we found was, unfortunately, was that in many cases, the inspectors were certifying and writing off that these properties were A-OK. But they're not. There's no way they could have passed inspection. So what we're asking is, we're definitely in support of this bill. We think that the Department of Aging should be a separate entity. There's no disrespect to the Commissioner of the Health Department. We feel that the Health Department is doing way too much, that this should be a separate agency. Even something as simple as, and I want to show you all this real quick. What's interesting is, is I looked at the Department of Aging for Baltimore County, which our organization has worked with, all right? And I can tell you that they will help seniors navigate through whatever the issues are. Here's the difference between us and them. When you go to the Baltimore County website, there's clear giant buttons that say senior centers, online classes, programs and services, health and wellness, housing services, financial resources, and so more. And there's also a little thing to click on for even more services. When you go to the Baltimore City's website, you're using a font that's just so small, there's no clarity. Even me, as a technical expert, I'm currently Chief Engineer at Radio 1 Baltimore. I'm an IT specialist. For me, this is too much. This is too much. This is not clear for a senior to be able to navigate through the services of this city. So we're asking that this bill goes through, and we're hoping that the City Council will allow us to work with them, to be able to help them forge together programs that could be beneficial to our seniors, because we are on the front lines every day dealing with our seniors. And the reason why you see me emotional right now is because our seniors should not be living like this. They should not be living like this.
I hear your passion.
So we're closing. I'm going to say this. I'm 52 years old. I'll be 53 in June. Two more years, I will qualify to be eligible for subsidized housing through many of the senior apartments in the city. I'd rather live on the streets. I'd rather live on the streets than some of these places that I've seen in this city. I'd rather live on the streets. So I'm asking you that this, please move forward without any objections. And if there's any way that our organization can help and assist you in forging together this plan.
Thank you.
We're there for you. Thank you.
Definitely hear your passion. Just for the committee and Health Departments, some of the things that I guess we would need some answers to when we have our next session, listening to some of his comments. ADA violation assessment is needed for senior housing. I don't know who would take care of that, but we'd like that answered. And is there a direct connect with federal agencies for their FEMA-type services? So you can answer that now?
So I mean, I would defer to housing. So all of the HUD and housing-related questions, I would defer to housing.
So we'd like, you know, some answers to that, to help us through this. It just definitely shows the need of addressing our senior problems. Okay, so now, let's see who's left, because we want to keep moving. Jackie Schroder? Thank you for your patience. A lot, a lot here, important information.
No, everything that I've heard is important to the work that we do. Good afternoon, and thank you so much for inviting me to speak with you today. My name is Jackie Schroder. I'm a licensed clinical social worker with a certificate in gerontology. And for the last nine years, I am the Director of the Elder Abuse Awareness Program, AHANA, an Agency of the Associated. I'm also the Project Coordinator for a grant from the Department of Justice Office on Violence Against Women to End Abuse in Later Life Solely in Baltimore City. Grant partners focus on improving policies and procedures and collaboration. Our partners include the Division of Aging and Care Services, amazing partners, the Ombudsman Program, the Baltimore Police Department, the State's Attorney's Office, both district and circuit courts, Adult Protective Services, APS, and AHANA. As of last week, I want to give you a couple of short examples of the power these partners in collaboration can create. As of last week, over 5,400 police personnel have been trained about elder abuse. And as of this morning, we learned that an elder abuse judge's bench card that we created was uploaded into the Maryland judiciary's digital library, and an email was sent to all judges and magistrates throughout the state. Direct abuse disclosure is very, very rare. It takes multiple encounters and trusting relationship for most older adults to report that they're being abused. Reliable research is clear. Reliable research is clear. It shows that one of every 10 community dwelling, not people living in nursing homes or assisted-living sites, but community dwelling, one of every 10 community dwelling older adults is being abused. This is considered under-report. In other words, it's suspected that there, for every 24 cases of elder abuse, only one gets reported, community dwelling. So we can do the math. If we have 125,000 older adults in the city as of 2019, that means on any given day, 12,500 older adults are being abused. The research is reliable. For older adults, and you know, abuse, abuse intersects all, every life domain and every program and service. For older adults to meet the statutory criteria that APS requires in order to provide services, a person must lack the capacity to make their own decisions and be unable to meet their own daily needs. Everyone thinks that as long as we have an APS program, we have abuse covered in our city. There couldn't be anything further from the truth. Since the inception of AHANA's Elder Abuse Program, the vast majority of community dwelling victims that we've served did not meet the APS criteria. A very wide gap exists in our city for serving these older adult victims who APS is not mandated to serve. A response system for them from within the city is needed. We heighten the risk of harm and of death by not taking this opportunity to giving immediate and critical attention to creating that system now. A victim of elder abuse needs a wide variety of services and support, much of which already exist in a local Department of Aging. I come to you today to say, as you're thinking about building a Baltimore City Office on Aging, programming and services for these elder abuse victims who don't meet the criteria for APS should be part of the plan. It is imperative that the new office has an elder abuse specialist included as an essential staff member to bring awareness to all program development, to create an elder abuse response program, and to continue and improve coordination of a citywide response system. The City's Office on Aging should include the responsibility to fill this vital gap and respond to the many older victims who are suffering and surviving in isolation and silence. And if we think there's any possibility that there's going to be more outreach into the city, we should all know that we already have started, and you will continue shining the light on elder abuse. You'll be building relationships, one-on-one relationships with these folks, and they will tell you. They won't tell you right away, but through the relationship work that you're going to do with them, that we're all going to do with them, they are going to be telling us. And if they tell us, and they're fully competent and capable, they will have no channel to get any of their needs met. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think there was one more that checked off. Kevin Barbales? Is he still here? Kevin Barbales?
Mr. Jamal? Do you want to testify? No.
Is there anyone else here that wants it to be? Before I get to the online people? Did you want to say something? Okay. Anyone else? And I know, just want to quickly also mention, there were some, there are agencies here that didn't testify, but I do want to recognize them. We had Leslie Yancy that left, that basically works in the Division for Seniors in the Department of Recreation and Parks. And also, Department of Recreation and Parks. Did you, are you good?
Yeah, we're fine.
Okay. And we also have Marcia Collins from Public Works that is here, that works with the Water for All. And also, we have representatives here from Housing and Community Development. So moving on quickly to some people online that have been just waiting patiently. I don't know if they were just listening or wanting to testify, but we're going to start with the online folks. And Betsy Simon, I see you have been on. Did you want to testify? I know you've sent some written testimony. Did you have a few words you wanted to add?
Hello?
Yes, you're on. Hi, Ms. Simon.
Very good. Very good. I want to thank you, Councilwoman Middleton and Councilman Cohen for bringing this to the forefront. As you know, we are very much concerned. BDS Healthy Aging Networks, a network of many, many groups who offer services and resources to older adults. I will not prolong the meeting, but I want you to know I speak in favor of this opportunity. And as promised, I will be sending a letter documenting that. Online with us are some of the members of our network and coalitions. Others have gotten the message. We are online every Wednesday, 1 to 5. We have done this since March 18, 2020. We'll continue it probably forever. And we reach out to 500 partners twice weekly, and we'll continue to do that. So please keep in mind that older adults are assets, we are not burdens. We can participate in requesting the services we need, and we will partner with any and everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the work you continue to do with your organization. Moving on, Billie Jean Lewis? Did you have a testimony? Billie Jean Lewis? And hello? Moving on to...
Here she is.
Oh, there you go. You're on.
Yeah, I'm a reporter.
Did you have any comments?
I'm a reporter with the Baltimore sign. I don't have a comment.
Okay, thank you for being on. Earl Millett? Earl Millett, did you have testimony? Moving on to Elizabeth Briscoe?
Oh, everyone's passion, and really appreciate both you, Sharon and Zeke, and your efforts in this. You have stayed steadfast and have been just incredible and dedicated champions of older adults in Baltimore City. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Briscoe. Grace Parente? I apologize if I pronounced your name wrong. Grace, you're on.
I'm just here to listen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James? Baranataski? James Baranataski, you're on. No, so no comment. Moving on. No, Maggie, is your person? Andorio Harmon? And he already... Andorio Harmon? Okay, moving on to Tiffany Meden? Tiffany Meden? Tiffany, did you have testimony? Okay, now we have one call. Caller, you are, you're on. Did you? Caller number three. Did you have testimony? You're on.
Yeah, I do have a question. I wanted to ask, since there seems to be a problem about the services being in the Health Department, until we're able to separate it, get that organized, could we not have a person in the Health Department that could handle the challenges of seniors, and they could direct them specifically? We have somebody on call at all times just for seniors, for to get the specialties, so that they could help them and get in touch with these other people who are connected in the room?
May we have your name?
Clarissa Washington.
Thank you. So I know that the, this is one of the reasons we're having this hearing, and the Health Department is continually working hard to do the best they can for now. And they are here to help as we're getting issues right away. So if there's any specific issues that you care about, you can say those now. But we're working hard for the people that did express some concerns as we were having this hearing, like the elevator and just some other things, we're trying to answer now. But is your testimony in favor of having a separate office, independent agency? Is she still on?
Commissioner, maybe you could share the MAPS number?
So MAPS is our call center, 410-396-2273.
Okay, so we left a MAPS number with you for any other help that's needed. But again, the purpose of this hearing is to work together and try to improve what we think now is a dire need of a separate office. And we, so with that, I just want to thank everyone that has stayed this, how long is it? We've been here since 2:00, and it's now 4:45, just about. So thank you all for your dedication, the people that gave testimony, the Health Department and your team, thank you for staying. I want to thank the Commission on Aging for your testimony and all the other agencies. Again, it clearly shows that we definitely need some dire coordination. We need funding redirected, and we just need to have a director and some outreach workers to really start working to get on the streets and help. Thank everyone for your testimony again, all of the people that, all of the nonprofits that took their time to give your testimony, and thank you for the work you continue to do to help out as well. I hope this hearing has stressed the need. We're going to go in recess and just say that we are going to have some, one or two more work sessions just to continue to follow up on the progress. And if my colleague, co-sponsor has some final words before we close out.
No, just thank you, like my colleague said, for everyone for taking the time today, for showing your passion. Again, thank you to Sharon Green Middleton for her leadership on this, to Commissioner Gerasa, to everybody. We look forward to continuing the conversation and getting this done. Thank you.
Thank you, and we're now in recess.